Morning, convening the 10 a.m. hearing on the House Committee on Transportation today, March 20th, 2025 at 10 a.m., here in conference room 430 at the Hawaii State Capitol. Myself, Vice Chair Grandinetti. We have two measures on today's agenda, so if you folks would get started with me. I'd like to start with our first agenda item this morning. Oh, sorry, broke it. Housekeeping. In order to allow people to testify, we instituted a time limit at any given time. Per testifier, morning hearings must adjourn prior to floor session. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and video off while waiting to testify, and after your testimony is complete. Zoom chat is only for folks to talk with tech staff. Please use it for only technical issues. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. Event of network failure may be necessary to reschedule the hearing at an appropriate time, and we'll make the appropriate notice for that hearing. Please do not use trademark or copyrighted images, as it will affect our live streaming capabilities. And we haven't had to, but just a friendly reminder to always, please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior, as such is grounds for removal. And with that, we'll get started with our agenda for this morning. First hearing on the first agenda item for this 10 a.m. hearing is SB 597 relating to administrative driver's license revocation extends the time restriction which Hawaii, the Hawaii Administrative Driver's License Revocation Office is required to issue written review decision of a notice of administrative revocation of a person's driver's license. Vice Chair for the testimony, please.
Attorney General in support?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Deputy Attorney General Mark Tom for the department. Department provides testimony in support of Senate Bill 597. This bill essentially extends the statutory deadlines for the Administrative Driver's License Revocation Office. This would be such a huge important part in chemical testing for OVUII cases operating a vehicle under the influence of an intoxicant. Currently, there is very small percentage of forensic toxicology labs to conduct this type of testing. And because of that, a lot of the neighbor islands, when they do their testing and have to send it out, it takes longer to get the results back. And so this bill will essentially allow to make sure chemical testing is provided to the Administrative Driver's License Revocation timely, and we will be here for any questions. Thank you.
Mahalo.
Department of Law Enforcement in support? Department of Transportation in support on Zoom?
Good morning, Chair. My name is Larry Dill. I'm Administrator for the Highways Division of the Department of Transportation. We stand on our testimony as submitted in support of this measure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hawaii Police Department in support? Honolulu Police Department in support on Zoom? No? Oh, present. Okay. HPD?
We'll come back.
Okay, we'll come back. County of Hawaii Office of the Prosecuting Attorney in support on Zoom? Okay, Kiki Injury Prevention Coalition in support. And Frank Schultz individual in opposition. Go back to HPD. Are you on? Okay, anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any questions? I have one. Attorney General, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Chair.
So for section two of SB 597, right now, it has it at fifteen nine, fifteen days after the date of notice was issued, and thirty days after the date of notice was issued. Is that currently being, that's practice right now?
No, it's currently eight days and twenty-two days, which is what sometimes presents a difficulty.
And that's been the problem, because it's too short of a timeline?
Yes, because of the shipping time.
Yeah.
Or from neighbor islands to here, or here to the mainland.
And how long has this been going on, if you don't mind me asking? This statute has been?
Oh, it has been for the past few years, I believe. There was a change in the contractor, where the local contractor, due to retirement, something like that, they were not able to do it in-state anymore. So then it started getting sent to the mainland.
So it worked when we had in-state contractor?
Yes, but right now, there's no definite plans for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I was, yeah, thank you for that. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing that, members, let's move on to the next agenda item before us. SB 1285 SD2 relating to highway safety establishes the offense of operating a vehicle while impaired, and penalties establishes the process to automatically suspend the license of a person arrested for driving under the influence allows a person whose license is automatically suspended for driving under the influence to contest the suspension. Amends the administrative process at the Administrative Driver's License Revocation Office, requires the Department of Attorney General to submit reports to the legislature. Vice Chair for testimony, please.
Judiciary offering comments? Attorney General offering comments?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, Deputy Attorney General Elise Oyama for the department. Our testimony is just about section two, which relates to the DUI infraction being created. We do just have some concerns. As it stands right now, we have the ability to use a blood alcohol concentration that's below the .08 based upon a offender's driving that's observed by a law enforcement officer. We also would note that for someone to get this infraction, they would have to still be initially arrested by a law enforcement officer. Often, these infraction types of offenses are supposed to be an efficient use of law enforcement resources, where they just write the citation and then can go on to their next law enforcement contact. So it works counter to what our normal infraction process would be. So for that, we would be recommending taking out that section. And I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney, oh, sorry, I just did that. Office of the Public Defender in opposition?
Good morning, Chair.
Vice Chair Grandinetti, Representative Evelyn Sonnegan, and Deputy Public Defender. The Office of the Public Defender is in opposition to this. As noted by the Office of the Attorney General, there is a statute which allows for this to be charged, 291 E 61A, which is actually broader than the .05. We believe that this is going to have unintended consequences. The OVUII court, or colloquially called the DUI court, it's already overburdened, and many charges are dropped because police officers can't make the hearings. Should these cases come before the Office of the Public Defender, we're going to suggest that people contest them, because it's an administrative process rather than a criminal process, which is, we would say, violative of due process rights. The number of cases that are going to come before the court means a lot of them are going to get dropped, just like a lot of them are already being dropped. So you're going to have a less, a lower prosecution rate. We also regretfully would like to contest the conversation about fatalities. Fatalities for DUIs have dropped significantly in the last few years. We don't believe that that is because of a change in law, but because of a change in behavior of drivers. So the change in the way that people can get rides, and the basic conversation that has happened about drunk driving with our generation. So for those reasons, we contest, and we believe that this is no, not necessary at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonnini.
Department of Transportation in support on Zoom?
Yep. Morning, Chair. Larry Dill, Administrator for Highways, Department of Transportation, and we stand in support with comments on this measure, in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
County of Hawaii Office of the Prosecuting Attorney in support on Zoom? Not present. Maui County Department of the Prosecuting Attorney offering comments. Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support. AAA Hawaii offering comments. Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. Malaha Naipua in support. MAD offering comments. Hawaii Alcohol Policy Alliance in support on Zoom? Not present. Lokahe Treatment Centers in support. Maikae Cleaning Services in support. Cynthia Okazaki individual in support on Zoom?
Hi. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Cynthia Okazaki, and I am in strong support of Senate Bill 1285, Senate Draft Two. I'm just going to briefly highlight what I've stated in my written testimony. Reducing the blood alcohol content to .05% is linked to fewer instances of impaired driving and its consequences. A .05 BAC limit is a deterrent to impaired driving and affects everyone's safety. Lowering the BAC limit to .05 is not about drinking. It is about separating drinking from driving. It is about preventing crashes, injuries, and deaths, creating safer streets for everyone. Contrary to popular belief, data from Utah, after the state lowered their BAC 2.05% in 2019, showed that the alcohol sales actually increased 28%. Again, this bill does not limit the amount of alcohol consumed or purchased. This bill would improve the overall health and safety of all people in Hawaii. I urge you to move SB 1285, Senate Draft Two, out of committee. Mahalo for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Cavana Bagano individual in support on Zoom? Not present. Okay, we have seventeen additional individuals in support. Anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any questions? thank you. I know this is a quick agenda, but I do want to note after this one, we will gavel out and gavel in for our resolution hearing this morning, will be led by Vice Chair Grandinetti. Members, let's start with our first measure today, SB 597 relating to administrative driver's license revocation. Members, I'd like to adopt an HD1. Let's defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. I'd like to make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, turn your attention, turn your attention to amend, we'll go to section two, line nine. I want to amend it to specify that the written review decision shall be issued no later than fourteen days after the date of the notice was issued, and same section, section two, line 12, to specify that the written review decision shall be issued no later than twenty-eight days after the date the notice was issued. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing that, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB 597, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Cochran is excused. Representative Eveslin?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa is excused. Representative LaChica, excused. Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Muraoka?
Aye.
Representative Parrick?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, move on to second agenda item, SB 1285 SD2 relating to highway safety. Members, I'd like to do the same thing. I'd like to adopt the HD1 on the measure before us. I'd like to defect the effective date to July 1, 3000. We're going to do technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and you folks will see why. Members, I, I, the House Committee on Transportation previously took a position on supporting lowering the BAC, and I think it's clear that that is where we would like to go. But the great thing about the legislative process is there's, it's a process. And with this SB version, it's another attempt or version, I think, to look at lowering the BAC. But there are other parts of the bill that I think are super important. So I'd like to try some parts of the bill first, if you folks don't mind. With that, I'd like to delete sections one, two, and three. So section one will be deleted. Section two talks about a new section of the Hawaii revised statutes of operating a vehicle while impaired. While impaired, I'd like to do While impaired, I'd like to delete that. And then for section 3 as well, I'd like to do the same thing. So with the technical amendments, the new subsections shall be renumbered accordingly. I'd like to amend section 291E-41 to clarify the revocation periods for respondents who refuse to be tested. Replace the existing language on page 23, line 16 to 18 with the following. If a respondent has refused to be tested after being informed pursuant to section 291E-15, then the revocation period imposed under subsection B 1, 2, and 3 shall be doubled from the previous, from the period established in those revocation provisions. I'd also like to delete section 9 as it's written now to make amending and conforming amendments to make it conducive to the way that the bill is written now. And just making sure that in the same measure before that we just made amendments on SB 597 to specify that written review decision shall be issued no later than 14 days. And same thing that 28 days after the notice was issued. I believe I have it in the bill, but I just want to make sure it's consistent in the process for note-taking. So with that, members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Voting on SB 1285, SD2, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absences of Representative Cochran, Representative Kitagawa, and Representative La Chica. Are there any members voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Let's adjourn our 10:00 AM hearing, and we will prepare for the 10:15.
10:15 AM agenda of the House Committee on Transportation here in room, Conference Room 430 in the Hawaii State Capitol. Vice Chair Grandinetti here with Chair Keela, and today we'll be hearing resolutions. Housekeeping, in order to allow as many people to testify as possible, there will be a two-minute time limit per testifier. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. In that event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify and after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only. Please use the chat only for technical issues. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. And in the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, and please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. Okay. Okay, with that, we will move on to our first measures, HCR 201 and HR 193, requesting the Department of Transportation and Department of Transportation of the County of Maui to collaborate with the Kihei Community Association in the planning and implementation of the Kihei-Mauka Road Project. Chair for testimony.
Thank you. Members, HCR 201, HR 193, in tandem, providing support on Zoom, Department of Transportation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I am Larry Dill, Administrator for Highways, Department of Transportation. We stand on our testimony as submitted in support of the intent of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on the measures before us, is there anyone online or in person like to testify on either resolution? Seeing none.
Members, any questions? I have a quick question for DOT. In your testimony, you recommend a planning study be conducted. Is it necessary to amend the reso to reflect that, or was that just a broader contextual?
I don't think it's necessary to amend the resolution. That's consistent with the resolution.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. Any other questions, members? Okay. Seeing none, moving on to HCR 203 and HR 195, urging the County of Maui to prioritize the development and planning of the northern terminus of the Kihei North-South Collector Road. Chair for testimony.
Thank you. HCR 203, HR 195, there are no registered testifiers that provided testimony in the measures before us. Is there anyone online or in person like to testify on the measures before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? No one to ask questions. Okay. Moving on to the next measure, HCR 205, HR 197, urging the County of Maui and the United States Army Corps of Engineers to prioritize and expedite the planning, funding, and construction of a permanent replacement for the Kulani Hakoui Bridge. Chair for the testimony.
Thank you. HCR 205, HR 197, testimony in tandem. We have one registered testifier, Frank Schultz, who is supporting, did not say that they'll be doing Zoom or in person. Seeing no other further registered testifiers, is there anyone else online or in person that like to testify on HCR 205, HR 197, in the room or online? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to HCR 30, HR 29, requesting each county police department to increase enforcement against out-of-state vehicles operating on public roadways that have not been properly registered in the appropriate county. Chair for testimony.
Thank you. HCR 30, HR 29, in tandem, we have one individual in support, Frank Schultz. Anyone online or in person like to testify on the measure before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Moving on to HCR 44, HR 37, requesting the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation to extend the Skyline Rail project to the west side of Oahu. Chair for testimony.
Thank you. HCR 44, HR 37, in tandem, one individual providing testimony and support. Is there anyone else online or in person like to testify on the measure before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Moving on to HCR 45, HR 38, urging the Public Utilities Commission to support the complete transfer of its regulatory authority over motor carriers and other means of transportation to the Department of Transportation. Chair for testimony.
Thank you. Members, HCR 45, HR 38, in tandem, we have several testifiers on this matter before us. Up first, Leo Ascension at the Public Utilities Commission in support. Next, we have the Department of Transportation in support on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I am Larry Dill, Administrator for Highways, Department of Transportation. We stand on our testimony as submitted in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Frank Schultz in support. Is there anyone else online, in person, that would like to testify on the matter, the measures before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any questions?
I have a question for DOT.
Go ahead.
Hi, Larry. Did you have a chance to review the PUC's testimony? Just asking for clarification, if the water carrier authority is something the DOT would like?
I'm sorry, I have not had a chance to review that.
Okay. Could you ping maybe somebody before we do decision-making on the matter before us, if possible?
Certainly, will do.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the next measure, HCR 71, HR 64, requesting the Ko'olina Golf Club owners and management, in coordination with the Department of Transportation, to implement measures to prevent golf balls from reaching Farrington Highway. Chair for testimony.
Thank you. Members, HCR 71, HR 64, in tandem, first providing, sorry, two members, two people in support on the measure before us. Up first, Department of Transportation in support. I think he's getting enough. And then next, we have Frank Schultz in support. Anyone else online or in person like to testify on the matter before us? Seeing none, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Moving on to HCR 120, HR 116, requesting the Airports Division of the Department of Transportation to convene a task force to explore the feasibility of establishing and implementing a corporation to manage the state's airports. Chair for testimony.
Thank you. HCR 120, HR 116, in tandem of testimony. Up first, we have Department of Transportation in opposition on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair Keela, Vice Chair Grandinetti, members of the committee, Kurt Otoguro, Deputy Director for Airports. We appreciate the opportunity to testify. We respectfully oppose these measures for several reasons, as stated in our testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Up next, Kamakana from UPW, providing comments in person.
Good morning, Chair Keela, Vice Chair Grandinetti, members of committee, Tulie Tifai with UPW. I did want to first just address, there was a slight error on the title of, on our testimony, so we just wanted to make sure that you're made aware. But UPW stands on our comments. Be here for any questions if you have.
Thank you. Up next, we have Lori Lum from the Airlines Committee of Hawaii, providing comments. Not here. Next, we have Jacob Akhi from Alaska and Hawaiian Airlines, providing support. Next, we have Randy Pereira of Hawaii Government Employees Association, providing comments in person.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Nui Sebastian with HGE. I will stand on our in comments. I do just want to kind of just emphasize that we represent hundreds of employees that provide services within our airports, so we would just like to be included in this task force, or just specifically an amendment to include representatives from public sector unions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, Ted Kofalis of Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in support. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on the measures before us, is there anyone else online or in person like to testify on the matter? Seeing none, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any questions?
I have a question. DOT, thank you for clarifying your folks' position and testimony. So if I could just, I think maybe understand further, in the case that we adopt an authority, we remove legislative oversight and purview, how does that work in other states that operate with authorities? Does the legislature have any input?
It depends, Chair. In most cases, corporations are private. In those cases, the legislature does not have the authority over policy or appropriations or that matter. So we believe that while we have been working tirelessly as an airport system for 15 airports, we have master plans. We have made great strides over the last several years in prioritizing many of the projects that focus on safety, airfield safety to begin with. We are focused on, as you very well know, inputs to additions to the terminal here in Honolulu with the Mauka expansion. We have further plans to continue that modernization and plan, so. And then we're also working with our vendors to improve and offer passengers and guests different food and beverage alternatives, retail alternatives. These are contracts that are bid out and are there. So we believe that we're in a good place with the structure in place and governance in place with the legislature to continue on and make good progress. So the instance of a corporation really is, has been vetted, as the legislature has known, for several years, four previous sessions have addressed this. And so the discussions have always been pros and cons, like anything. But we believe that we're already doing what we need to do to improve level of service to passengers. It's all about passenger experience, as well as a great working relationship with the Airline Committee of Hawaii and the airline partners. And so we just feel that this is redundant, and time would be better spent working with the legislature and working with our partners to continue the plan that we currently have in place.
Okay, then I think that leads to my next question, is that if you operate with an authority under a public, I guess, service, which is the airport, does it then become privatized?
That's one option that the task force could come up with. And so again, the task force will vet through different models of airport corporations. Some airports internationally, the government owns their fields and privatize on the terminal side. So again, going through a task force and weighing all the different alternatives can be done. We just believe that the model that we've had in place continues to improve, or we're able to improve upon what we're doing and deliver without having another layer of bureaucracy, frankly, that would add to policymaking that may be contrary to what the state legislature or the governor wants. And so again, not that you, it's just time-consuming to go through this process to figure out the governance. And we believe that the governance in place today works. It always can be improved, and we're always willing to do that. Director Sniffin is all about change and making sure that we're efficient and that we're responsive. And so I personally believe we are in a good path forward to continue that mission, fulfill what we need to fulfill.
Thank you. One more question, Kurt. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the way that we operate the airports now, we collect landing fees from all these private operators. In the case, from my understanding, with the landing fees we assess on everything with our operators, we are able to then subsidize airport terminals that are not as busy? Is that correct?
That's correct, Chair. So we are a airport system of 15 across the state. We're very fortunate to have commercial airports as we all travel. And so we generate aviation-related revenue, and we also have an opportunity to generate non-aviation-related revenue that doesn't pertain directly to airlines, but general aviation rentals. We have property, off-airport property, part of the DOT, and so we have car rental agencies. And so we're able to manage all of the expenses and sustain growth through capital investment, through revenue bonds that we issue based on the financial performance of this airport. And so thankfully, thanks to good leadership of Director and administrators and the entire team, we're able to run a shop where revenue exceeds expenses. And so we don't, we are fully funded on ourselves, special funded. We do not depend on state funds, as you know, and general funds. So the model that is established today is very efficient from a tax burden perspective, and we believe that we should be allowed to continue with that, with input, and of course, always open to adjustments and making changes as it seems appropriate. But this airport system can subsidize some of the other airports that don't have the necessary foot traffic or volume to sustain itself. But as we all know, these rural airports are equally important to serve our communities. And so this is why the model we feel financially is we're able to certainly take care of all of our residents throughout the states.
Okay, sorry, one more question. So I didn't- So I didn't realize that technically, if you did a task force on a private area, I mean, you privatize, you could technically privatize a public space. I didn't realize that was possible. So knowing that, are you able to just maybe send the committee several examples of, I guess, public? I think that's my larger concern. I didn't realize you could technically privatize a public transportation process and then make it private and subject to privatization.
Yeah, and these are just options. I'm not saying that it's possible, but certainly the task force would vet through that. But again, we believe because we have a source of federal funding, as well as our revenue bond generations and a good track record.
Wait, sorry, Kurt. Well, that's at the top of my head. Is an airport that then does a privatizing still leverage federal funds?
It could. It could. But again, decision-making for that then rests in your corporation board. And again, policymaking at the legislative level would be blurred. And so again, you know, this is, like I said, Chair, this has been vetted many years. And so we believe that the model we have today works. We'll continue to make improvements. And we're the most efficient right now. We have a master plan for all airports that are being updated that will continue to make improvements that will benefit the public, as well as our airline partners.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, moving on to our final measure. HCR 123, HR 119 requesting the Department of Transportation Services of the City and County of Honolulu to implement a restricted parking zone pilot program in the Ko'olina, Honokai, Hale, Nanakuli, and Maile neighborhoods. But Chair for the testimony.
Thank you, members, HCR 123, HR 119 in tandem. We have one person providing testimony in opposition. Seeing no other further registered testifiers on the measures before us, is there anyone else online or in person like to testify? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions? Seeing none, we will be recessing. Reconvening the 10:15 a.m. agenda of the House Committee on Transportation, we will be decision-making on our resos, starting with the first measure. HCR 201 and HR 193 requesting the Department of Transportation and Department of Transportation of the County of Maui to collaborate with the Kihei Community Association in the planning and implementation of the Kihei Maoka Road Project. We'll be moving this out as is. Chair for the vote. Oh, questions, comments, or concerns from members? Okay, seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, voting on HCR 201, HR 193 in tandem. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Cochran, excused. Representative Efsen?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa, excused. Representative LaChica, excused. Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Moroka? Representative Pyrick?
Aye.
Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HCR 203 and HR 195. The recommendation is to move this out as is. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, voting on HCR 203, HR 195 in tandem, noting the excused absences of members Cochran, Kitagawa, and LaChica, who will remain excused for the remainder of this agenda unless noted. With the members present before us, are there any members voting with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you.
Recommendation is adopted.
Moving on to HCR 205 and HR 197. The recommendation is to move out as is. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, voting on HCR 205, HR 197 in tandem, noting the excused absences of the previous members, sorry, noting the excuse absences of members Cochran, Kitagawa, and LaChica, and noting the presence of the members who are present. Is there any members wishing with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HCR 30 and HR 29. Recommendation is to move out as is. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just a quick comment, Chair. I think, I appreciate you moving this recommendation forward. I think Hawaii taxpayers are the ones that are paying road user charges. And I think there's no problem with folks who are coming to Hawaii under the orders and guise of military service, who get the proper exemptions for not registering their vehicles. But I think you have people who have moved out from out-of-state into Hawaii who have not properly registered their vehicles and at some position are not doing their fair share of diligence of the damage that is then caused on the road by these vehicles not properly registered. I would hope that with the passage and adoption of this resolution, the county police enforcement departments would take this seriously. Because when we talk about burdening our taxpayers, I think it should not be solely the taxpayers having to burden these out-of-state folks not participating. I don't want to say theft, but it's almost in that same position, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, voting on HCR 30, HR 29 in tandem. Members, are there anyone wishing to vote reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HCR 44 and HR 37. Recommendation is to pass as, or move out as is. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Quick comment, Chair. I just want to make a comment that when I look at Heart Extending Skyline, it doesn't, I would hope that it doesn't have to be what is known to go throughout the entire corridor of Oahu as is. I think the cement and the elevated skyline works, but I also don't think that would necessarily work in a position or places like the west side of Oahu. But what's happening now is that you expect the largest workforce on the island of Oahu to use a system that goes always to Kapolei in order to access it. And just to get from that point A to point B alone is a traffic jam in itself. And when you want people to use public transportation and you need to make it to go to the places it needs to, I think it is concerning. So I would hope that they can even just explore different ways. I'm not saying to go underground. I'm not saying light rail on the ground, but something to some sort that makes the skyline feasible for folks in west Oahu that could actually benefit the most from it. And then the resolution stating that something that could move at quick speed can also serve as an opportunity to quickly get people out of an area in the case of an emergency. So that's kind of my position on that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Also, so like Rep. Keela had mentioned, I do support some type of system getting our people out from the west side. But as this reso is written to extend the rail, I think it's the wrong president. I mean, I would definitely support something, helping our traffic jam because we do have the largest population of labor workers. So with it, the way it's written, I'm a no.
Members, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, voting on HCR 44, HR 37 in tandem, noting the no vote from Representative Moroka. Members, anyone else wishing to cast a reservation or no vote? No vote from Representative Pyrick? Anyone else wishing to cast a no vote or vote of reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HCR 45, HR 38. We are going to defer decision-making on this one until Tuesday, March 25th at 10 a.m. And a hearing notice will be issued. We're just waiting on additional information from DOT. Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to HCR 71, HR 64. Recommendation is to move this one out as is. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Chair, seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, voting on HCR 71, HR 64 in tandem, noting the excuse absence of the previous members as noted before. Is anyone wishing to vote reservations or no? Seeing none, I mean Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Now on to HCR 120, HR 116. We are going to defer this one, just citing the concerns of the Department of Transportation. And now moving on to HCR 123, HR 119. Moving this one out as is, or recommendation is to move this one out as is. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Quick comment, Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you for moving this one forward. I think when you look at areas of Kalihii that have adopted this pilot program, it obviously works. I think the communities that have been impacted by influx of tourists is mean amazing visitors from across the state and across the world to come visit our neighborhoods. But as we know, some of these neighborhoods where people are visiting abates people's residential lives. And people are still trying to live while people are visiting Hawaii. And parking plays a huge part in that. And so I think this would encourage the county to maybe expand what they're doing in downtown Honolulu to our less-known communities on west side of Oahu. So I appreciate the opportunity to move this forward.
Thank you. Members, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Members, voting on HCR 123, HR 119 in tandem. Members, anyone wishing to vote no or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And that is all on our agenda today. How many times? Oh, we adjourned. That's it? Okay.